Welcome to Bookman Road Elementary School. As we have our February 26th meeting of this esteemed board. The reason I can remember this date is my wife's birthday tonight. So if I'm ducking, she may just come in the back door. No, thank you. We're glad to be here at Bookman as always. At this time, we're going to stand and have our moment of silence and the pledge of allegiance. Would you please stand? Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, very good. Do I hear a motion to approve the agenda for tonight? Ms. Anderson, Inspector, seconded. Any discussion or changes to the agenda? Thank you. We have item number five is our consent agenda, which includes approval of the agenda, approval of minutes from the previous meeting, facilities report, technology report, budget update report, suited admission request, suited admission request to the district's adult education program, and ratification of personnel. Do I hear a motion to approve our consent agenda?
Second.
Okay, Ms. Anderson, Mr. Manning, any questions about the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Not a question, well, it is a question actually. On the technology report, it wasn't included in there because it didn't need...
That's okay, I understand what you're saying.
Yes, sir, I was gonna ask a question about it, sir.
Go ahead.
On the technology report, I wanted to ask whoever Dr. Broschu felt would be the appropriate person to respond, and that is, as we move towards the Common Core standards and the Common Core testing that's gonna kick into place next year, are we prepared from a technology perspective to have that level of activity during testing time and that volume of students while at the same time we want to, we will need to carry on our business as usual? I guess I'm asking, are we prepared to handle that as it relates to the bandwidth of our infrastructure with the move towards online testing next year? That's the question.
That's a great question, Mr. Jackson, and we've had lots of conversation in the district, and I'm gonna ask Dr. Hamm to respond.
Thank you.
I'll give you a response, and if Mr. Kramer needs to add anything to it, invite him to please do that. But we have gotten the specifications from Smarter Balanced. We know that the technologies that we've been putting in place with our one-to-one computing program comply with their requirements. We have, we believe we have ample bandwidth. You know, we upgraded all of that as we were doing the one-to-one implementation, so we think we're gonna be in good shape for that. Would you like to add anything, Tom?
Yeah, follow up, Mr. Manning?
No, sir, I'm just waiting and hopefully that the, some pilot testing will be done, and we'll make sure. So I'll accept that for now. Thank you very much.
Mr. Kramer, do you have anything to add?
The only part I would add is that this spring, we're gonna begin doing, conducting online map testing.
Great.
So that'll give us a good baseline for how that particular activity responds with our bandwidth limitations and that sort of thing. So we'll know a lot more this spring.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
Mr. Chairman, and Mr. Jackson, to your statement too, I asked the district about a failover for our bandwidth in case the main pipe went down. We have so much bandwidth, it's hard to find somebody else that can even give us that in a backup scenario. So I know that's one of the challenges. But the other thing with the technology report, Tom, see, we have a mobile app now for the district, which is very exciting. I actually downloaded that on my phone, something I've been asking for, for a while, that our parents have more mobile access to some of the information. So good start in the right direction, and thank you for that.
Thank you, Mr. Manning. There is a motion to approve the consent agenda. And a second, and you can vote at this time. Inspector? Okay, there it goes. Okay, thank you. Past seven, seven zero. Now we have our time of special recognitions. Dr. Broschu, I'll turn it to you, and...
Thank you very much, Dr. Fleming. At this time, I'll call on Ken Blackstone, who serves as the Executive Director for Communications and Strategic Partnerships, to introduce a number of special recognitions for this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman, Madam Vice Chair, members of the board, Dr. Broschu and staff. Tonight, we have several outstanding awards and recognitions, and for those being honored as I call your name, please come forward while I describe your award, and our board members will have a certificate for you, and then we'll pause and have a quick photo. So that's how that will work. And first to be recognized is the Longleaf Middle School Girls Empowered Program. These students are learning to be innovative using one-to-one computing, service learning, and team-building projects. Come on up. And their efforts were recognized last month when they received the Gold Award for School Innovation from the South Carolina Education Oversight Committee, the EOC, through a video contest, which showed how their school is helping prepare them for a world that values innovations. And joining them up front is the EOC Director of Communications and Community Involvement, Dana Yao, and Assistant Principal Jo Eberlin, the district's, I'm sorry, the programs director, Mary Dixon, and advisor Angela McDowell. And I hope I didn't miss anybody. And we're gonna get a group photo as well.
Make you look good, James.
Next, I would like to have Condor Elementary School dance teacher Venetia Stribling come forward, if she's here. Ms. Stribling was recently selected to be the Magnet Schools of America 2013 Magnet Teacher of the Year for Region 11. And the award recognizes Mrs. Stribling for her commitment to high academic standards, curriculum innovation, successful diversity of efforts, and consistent delivery of high-quality education to students. Now, you also may remember that earlier this year, she was selected as the 2012 Dance Educator of the Year by the SC Dance Association.
Sure, absolutely.
So congratulations on you. And joining Ms. Stribling was Dr. Shirley Watson, Condor's principal, so thank you also, Shirley. Next up, I would like to call Susanna Hallbrook, a teaching assistant at North Springs Elementary School. Ms. Hallbrook was crowned the ultimate champion for the district's chopped competition, the event held last month at Westwood High School, the friendly culinary competition, as opposed to a hostile one, was brought together, staff, don't wanna have that with kitchen knives and so on, but brought together staff from different sites and schools from across the district, a total of six finalists battled it out in the two-round competition, and coming forward to congratulate Ms. Hallbrook is David Holzendorf, principal of North Springs Elementary School, and also from the district's food services, Uma Cunyanen, and operations manager, Erwin Evans, and Shelley Whipple, who's the special events coordinator. I also know we had some outstanding judges for that competition as well.
Willing.
Why don't you name a couple of the judges?
And speaking of food, while today, while we were all eating lunch, Vicky Pascoe of Catawba Trail Elementary School was honored as the 2012 Teacher of the Year at the South Carolina Association of Conservation District's, their awards luncheon. Ms. Pascoe is a strong believer of hands-on learning in science and getting outside to learn about nature. She recently received a $1,000 Greenworks grant from Project Learning Tree to expand the school's garden for teachers to be used as an outdoor science lab, and she is joined by Assistant Principal Mr. Stacy Gadsden. Now it's time to round up the folks from Round Top Elementary School, which was recently selected as the 2013 SC School of Character by the Palmetto Character Council. The school is recognized for having reached a standard of excellence within South Carolina in the area of character development. And here to be recognized are Principal Janine Tucker and Guidance Counselor Will Moody, who played a key role in the development of the school's character education plans. And finally, we have a special presentation from our friend Mac Bennett, the CEO of the United Way of the Midlands. I'd like to ask him to come forward and introduce his guest and tell us about these awards.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Now, y'all are gonna find this hard to believe, but I'm speechless, not because I don't have anything to say, but because my voice is quickly leaving me, so I'm gonna... Cynthia Bennett, whom most of you know, is here to bail me out if I get in trouble here. So we've got a few awards that we wanna recognize, some of the outstanding schools, and when you think about schools and community, one of the best way to show that achievement is in schools and communities working together, and that's what we have here in Richland School District Two. And we just wanna recognize some of the outstanding service that some of your schools have provided in supporting our record-setting campaign at United Way this year. So we have four Best in Class awards that we would like to distribute this evening. The first goes to Clemson Road Child Development Center, that had 81% participation, and their campaign was led by Carmen Hurd and Debbie Brady. Are they here? Good.
I've already been relieved, so... I think we're gonna have one of them all in the, come up, we've got four of the groups today.
While she's taking the picture, not to prolong the evening, we'll proceed. The best elementary school goes to Keels Elementary School. Their campaign coordinator was Ms. Jennifer Baffler. And their participation level, I like to talk through numbers, being mayor to a banker, they had 93% participation, so that is very outstanding. Best middle school goes to Longleaf Middle School. Their coordinator was Shannon Baffler, and their participation was 45%. Best high school, Richland Northeast High School, Ms. Ginger Belka, campaign coordinator, and their per capita was $27.63 per person. Not Ginger and your name. Mr. Joe Watson is filling in. I would like to share with you that Richland School District Two was the second-largest school district to make the, a contribution to this year's United Way campaign, and they raised over, or you or we raised over $79,490, so give yourselves a round of applause. Now, we did also have some merit increase, 10% increase awards, and those go to the following schools, so if a representative could come forward, Westwood High School, Keels Elementary School, Condor Elementary School, and Clemson Road Child Development Center. We also had Bron's Participation Center for Accelerated Preparation and Longleaf Middle School. And then for the district, we'd like to recognize, as a civil award recipient, the Richland School District Two administration and Ms. Laura Barber and Ms. Arlene Ford were in charge of your campaign, and so if they could come forward?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, Baker. You have to read handwriting. And they're with the Office of Communication. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. and Mrs. Bennett. And we appreciate you coming out to make these presentations. We're very proud to participate in Richland School District Two, and just as a point of personal privilege, I'd like to thank my entire Department of Communications and Strategic Partnerships for leading our campaign this year and raising almost $79,500. So congratulations to all of our winners tonight, and now I would like to ask Michael Giuliano, the principal of Bookman Road Elementary School, to come forward as our host school.
Mr. Blackwell, would you also announce the judges for their chopping, chop-off cooking?
I did make reference to the judges. They were Dr. Bill Fleming, Susan Brill, and there were a couple of other judges that they weren't with the district, they weren't district staff, and I can't recall who they were, and maybe you do, you know.
One was a chef from Sedexo Headquarters, and the other was the national winner of the chopped competition last year.
I don't know if Uma is still here, she might be able to tell us.
Also, Mr. Beedenborg from the State Department of Education.
That's right.
And Eric Cervantes from San Antonio, Texas.
Bob Davis was saying somebody's name.
Beedenbaugh.
Beedenbaugh.
Todd Beedenborg from the Office of Food Services.
Uma's gonna shed the light this light...
We had Ernest Cervante, he was the actual ultimate champion winner for summer of last year, where they had a grill competition on Food Network, so we were able to get him to be our guest judge and emcee. We also had a USC chef who participated as a judge, and we had, I think that were the two main judges that came besides our board members, and Todd Beedenborg, who at that point of time was the State Director of the Department of Education for Food and Nutrition. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone, and welcome to Bookman Road Elementary School, where we ignite, inquire, and inspire learning with the finest parents, teachers, and students. And every morning on our news show, we begin with that same line, and today, we are gonna take you on a journey down the Yellow Brick Road of learning. I realize that I have a limited time to present our school tonight, so my goal is to maximize that time through a few of our students presenting information from our snapshot of learning that you see on the back wall. Our students have many opportunities to be leaders during the school day and after school. There are many unique opportunities ranging from student ambassadors to beacon battle buddies, which all foster their leadership development. Our first two presenters are going to share with you about an after-school club that they participate in called Project Unify.
Good evening. My name is Kylie, and I'm here to talk about an after-school club we have here at Bookman called Project Unify. Project Unify is a club that students from the entire school can join to prepare special needs students for the Special Olympics. It also helps everyone learn to be better advocates for all the students in our school. So far this year, we have made posters to give to publics and have played basketball. I enjoy being a part of this club because I get to help people and it teaches me how to understand students with special needs. I wanted to get involved because I have a few friends in the school with autism, so when I heard about this, I wanted to help out. I enjoy the chance to learn and play with my friends in this after-school club. Thank you.
Hi, I'm Christian. Project Unify is exciting and fun. We shoot three pointers to the, for the Special Olympics. I really join this club.
And we're gonna adjust a little bit. Kids, we're gonna come up this way because they can't see you on the camera, so we'll just move up this way, right in front of the podium, if you wouldn't mind coming up this way. That's our life skill of flexibility we're gonna show off today. So thank you, Kylie and Christian, right in front of the podium, right over here, same line, and the camera will be able to see you. Traveling down the Yellow Brick Road, our next presenter is going to talk about immersion. Immersion is embedded within every classroom throughout the school and is a true example of meaningful, relevant, real-life learning.
Hi, I'm Mega, and I'm going to talk to you today about immersion. Immersion is a type of project that students make to help with the unit of study. It is important as it helps us learn the material better. It helps us learn by making it easier to remember things about the unit of study. For example, one of the immersion examples behind me is one that my class did on types of rocks. We learned about the three types of rocks, sedimentary, igneous, and metamorphic, where they come from and how to tell the difference between rocks and minerals. Immersion makes learning meaningful and fun. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mega. We'll continue our journey now to service learning. Social, political action and service learning are key components of the Bookman Road design. Each classroom has a service that they do for our school. These range from changing the school's marquee to maintaining our outdoor gardens. Another example is composting, which Luke will now explain further.
Hi, my name is Luke, and I'm going to talk to you about the classroom service which my class does for our school. Our service is composting. Composting is a method of decomposing edible unwanted substances such as eggshells, pears, carrots, pieces of paper, orange peels, and apples to make a rich, healthy soil that plants adore. Reusing these useful resources helps landfills to stop growing and from polluting the earth. In our school, composting helps us to learn the importance of knowing that we do not have to waste compost items to harm the environment. We use our compost in various gardens around the school. Composting is one part of the recycling process, and is just one aspect of the school-wide recycling program that we students coordinate here at Bookman. Thank you for your time.
This is a quick little video that actually Luke's class got a grant for $2,250 from Champions of the Environment, and because they were one of the biggest grant winners, they actually got a commercial that was put on TV as well, so here's a quick little commercial.
Champions of the Environment slukes Bookman Road Elementary School for their composting project. Students will compost cafeteria food waste, coffee grounds, and paper. The final material will be used in the school's garden to enrich the soil. Thank you, Bookman Road Elementary, for doing your part for South Carolina's environment.
Champions!
DHEC, International Paper, Sunoco Recycling Inc., WIS and WCSC proudly support Champions of the Environment.
So Luke just gave you one of over 20 examples of services that our students do for our school. Each service teaches students that we do services for our schoolwide community without an expectation of something in return. Beyond the school walls, our students also do services for the community and world. Oftentimes, our students collect items for a cause, such as stuffed animals for our local children's hospital, or items for sister care. In our last example, Mackenzie is going to share with you a project her class did for the greater community.
Hi, I'm Mackenzie, and I'm going to share with you a service learning project that we did in my class. After learning about the different regions in South Carolina, we made postcards on each region, the Sand Hills, Mountains, Coastal Plains, Coastal Zone, and the Piedmont. Each postcard highlighted the region with facts that we got from our fact files. The postcards were then sent to the Department of Parks, Recreation, and Tourism to be given to tourists. We learned how tourists have a great economic impact on our way of life in South Carolina. We not only learned a lot, but we also were able to give our work to others so they can learn as well. Thank you.
I wanna reiterate that this simply a snapshot that you see back here is simply a snapshot of what takes place in our school on a regular basis. We indeed have the finest parents, teachers, and of course, all of our students here at Bookman Road. Thank you for allowing us to present our learning to you tonight.
Mr. Chairman? Yes. I'd like to know what grades they're in. Mr. Giuliano, can you tell us what grade they're in? Oh, they can tell us themselves.
I'm in fifth grade.
I'm in fourth grade.
I'm in third grade.
I'm in fifth grade.
I'm in third grade.
Okay, that is our special recognitions and how wonderful they were tonight. Our next item on the agenda is our student learning report. Dr. Broschu?
Thank you. At this time, I'll ask Sue Mallett, our chief academic officer, to introduce our student learning report at this time.
Thank you, Dr. Broschu. We have a school that's on a mission, and their mission is for every third, fourth, and fifth grade student to know and understand their multiplication tables. And so entitled Multiplication Masters, you're gonna hear in just a minute from some of the teachers we have with us tonight, Matthew Wilson, who teaches fourth grade at Keels, and Katie Gaines, who teaches fifth grade at Keels, and some of the students who are going to share what this innovative program is all about.
My name is Kate Gaines, and I'm a fifth grade teacher at Joseph Keels. At Joseph Keels, we have a goal of 100% of our third, fourth, and fifth graders being fluent in their multiplication tables. We believe that having our students master their multiplication facts will ensure more mastery across math classes in our school. We have implemented a program at Keels to help encourage our students to learn their multiplication facts. We've incorporated design qualities of, I'm sorry, novelty and variety and organization of knowledge to truly benefit and educate our students. This program we have developed is called Multiplication Masters.
Good evening. I'm Matt Wilson, and I'm a fourth grade teacher at Keels. And our Multiplication Masters program is organized in three different rounds. Round one, which we've already held, is the students must master their zeros, ones, twos, fives, and tens. In round two, it's the threes, fours, nines, and elevens. And in round three, it's their six, sevens, eights, and twelves. Classes that have 100% mastery per round are rewarded with an ice cream scoop that's on the outside of their classroom door and an ice cream party. The reward system is part of our encouragement for students to master their facts, and you'll see a very interesting display of that by my student in a video you're gonna see. It's our mission not only to teach our students multiplication strategies, but inspire them to become multiplication masters. I hope please enjoy this presentation. I hope please enjoy this brief slideshow on to learn more about our Multiplication Masters.
Kayla, what you doing?
Doing multiplication.
Okay, tell me about Multiplication Masters.
Multiplication Masters is when the whole school participates in this multiplication test and we see who can do the best.
Okay, so we just finished round one where we did our zeros, ones, twos, fives, and tens. How'd you do on that? You did ace it, actually. How about in round two, you gonna be ready for round two when it comes?
I'm ready for it already.
You're ready for it already, sounds good, thank you. Hey guys, what you doing?
I'm math magician.
You're a math magician, what you doing on math magician?
I'm timing tables.
Awesome, okay, we just finished round one in Multiplication Masters. Did you both get 100?
Yes.
Awesome, round two is coming up. We're gonna be doing our threes, fours, sixes, and elevens. What do you think, you can get 100 on that?
Yeah!
And what do we get if we get 100?
We'll go get some ice cream!
Awesome, let's see, let's see, let's see. Woo, 100, fantastic.
Sort of.
Sort of, which ones do you know?
I know my twos, my livers, my tens, and my, um, threes.
Okay, some of those are hard.
And fives.
Okay, five times four is?
Twenty.
Okay, 10 times 5 is?
Fifty.
And 11 times 5 is?
Fifty-five.
Come on, give it back to me. 2 times 8 is?
2 times 8 is sixteen. I am a multiplication master.
Good evening, my name is Michael Byrd. I'm a third grader at Joseph Keels Elementary School. We are here this evening to present to you our school's Multiplication Masters. With help from my teachers, principals, faculty members, and my parents, I'm on my way to being a multiplication master.
Good evening, my name is Erica Jenkins. I'm a fourth grader at Joseph Keels Elementary. I'm on my way to being a multiplication master. I studied my facts so I am ready at my moment notice for an adult in my school to quiz me. Quit, Ms. Butler, quiz me.
Sixty-four.
Good evening, my name is Chalk Evans. I am from the third grade class at Joseph Keels Elementary. I am on my way of being a multiplication master. Um, I have different strategies of doing my multiplication facts. Like any times, any number times 10, just add a zero behind it. And like 3 times 10 equals 30, 12 times 10 equals 120. If I don't know my facts, I can't be an architect when I grow up.
Good evening, my name is Miles White. I am a fifth grader at Joseph Keels Elementary. I am on my way to being a multiplication master. I also use different strategies to multiply. When I multiply any number by 11, I just double the number. Like 8 times 11 equals 88 and 4 times 11 equals 24.
Good evening, my name is Rodney McQueen. I am a fifth grader at Joseph Keels Elementary. I am on my way to being a multiplication master. I practice my multiplication facts in my classroom. I use different websites to raise my friends in teams. We also play games like Around the World to spread this knowing our facts more quickly. When I go to middle school next year, I'll be prepared because I will be a multiplication master.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Sandra Williams. I'm the proud mother of that fifth grader Miles and I'd like to share with you some of the things that we did to get him up to par in his multiplication tables. Of course, the school provided us with the website. I think it was multiplication.com and we went to that website and it was really a pretty cool website because it gave us a formatting to how you learn the multiplication tables. I think we would start with our twos and then maybe we went to our fives and I think we did the tens and then elevens and then we backtracked. So in his mission to retain this information, if he knew 10 times 2 was 20, then he knew what 2 times 10 was. And what we do at home a lot is I give him a test three days a week. So we'll sit down and do the 3s, 4s, 5s on Mondays, 7s, 8s, 9s, 10s on Wednesdays, and then we'll do some more on Fridays. I give him the weekends off and then he gets a test every day in the car on our commute to school. So I'm extremely proud of him and I'm proud that he's a student at Joseph Keels. Thank you for your time.
My name is Lisa Pauling and I actually have a double interest in our multiplication. I am an assistant at Joseph Keels and this is my son, well, oops, he moved. My son was up here as well with his multiplication facts. So not only do I work during the school day helping them learn their multiplication facts, but I also work in the after-school program. And then I go home and it starts all over again. My daughter is actually in middle school so I know how important it is for them to know those multiplication facts like this. So my son is in third grade this year and I'm excited. When they come home, I have to put a little more effort into making it fun because I know they've had it all day. So they call me the cupcake queen. You don't get that title for making just a little bit of cupcakes. So when they want cupcakes, like the little red hen, you have to help. So we end up making cupcakes for three or four people at a time. So of course, when you pull the eggs out, guess what? It's time to multiply. So just making it fun like that and taking that scenario back to school, which most children can relate to cooking, so it's something they can relate to as well. So as you can see, our mission, our plan on making it not impossible.
Good evening, thank you for allowing us to share this Multiplication Masters program. I'm Alvera Butler, I'm the principal at Joseph Keels and we decided it is not a mission impossible. Multiplication is a necessary tool for mathematical success. Once a student reaches third grade, you won't master division and you won't master fractions without it. So is this the only way to go about increasing the success of our students? No, but it is an avenue and we're taking it. We're not, we're also using music. We're uncovering user-friendly strategies, giving timed quizzes, and random multiplication stops in the hallways. Over 50% of our students in grades 3 through 5 have shown mastery in the first round, that's zeros, ones, twos, fives, and tens. Next week, it's on to round two and continued focus on those who need to show mastery still in round one. We can and will do what we need to do to make sure students know their tables. We designed an innovative approach that includes organization of knowledge, authenticity, and some much-needed novelty and variety as a motivating factor. And after all, who could pass up on the opportunity for some ice cream or turning their principal and teachers into a human sundae as a culminating event? And we must not forget the power of words. Every third through fifth grade student has a card with multiplication tables on it, but on that card, it also states, and it says, "I am a Joseph Keels student and I am required to know my multiplication tables." I thank you for your time and I hope you've enjoyed this presentation. I also want to just acknowledge some very key people in our lives at Joseph Keels Elementary. Ms. Kristy Worry, assistant principal, please stand, Ms. Worry, so they can see you. Dr. Tamara Roberts, Dr. Tamara Roberts, right here. And Ms. Marlena Gore, here in the back is our curriculum coaching teacher. And everybody from Keels, please stand who is still here. Also, our instructional technology specialist who put that wonderful presentation together, Ms. V.C. Moses Johnson, and Ms. Taffel, also is a kindergarten teacher. They're not multiplying yet, but we're working on that. We'll get to that point. But thank you so much for having us and I hope you have learned from what we're doing at Joseph Keels. Thank you.
Thank you for the wonderful presentation of learning that's going on at your school. Appreciate that. Now's our first time of public participation. Did anyone sign up for public participation? Louis under my stack. This is starting to look like my desk at work here. Let's see, Donna Weston has signed up. Come forward, state your name and what area of the district you live in, please.
I'm Donna Weston and the area of the district?
Well, just give your address then.
Okay, well, I live near Ridgefield High School in the Highlands.
Yeah, but if you have a neighborhood or something.
Okay, yeah, the Highlands.
Okay, thank you.
I'm actually here as executive director of Discovery Program of South Carolina. And what I wanted to do was I wanted to have an opportunity to introduce District 2 to what it is that we do because ultimately, I would love to see us as a nonprofit organization partnering with the public school systems in training the teachers, especially the special ed teachers, to become educational therapists. So I have packets that I have for you that has fact sheet, has a DVD in there, as well as some brochures that gives an overview of what it is that we do. So real quickly, Discovery Program of South Carolina is, like I said, a nonprofit 501(c)(3) educational therapy clinic. What we do is we provide educational therapy-based interventions for struggling learners. And what we're doing is we're addressing the neurologically-based perceptual and cognitive skills that cause students to struggle. And we're doing that using academic tools so that within three to five years, the majority of our students are able to move beyond and become independent learners, no longer needing any kind of accommodations or special services at all. It's absolutely incredible. The background for this is we are a program of excellence with NILD, the National Institute for Learning Development. And I am also an instructor with NILD. NILD has, is a nationally accredited training organization for training educational therapists and developing programs. They're recognized by IDA, the International Dyslexia Association, as for their ability to train educators in research-based methods. The NILD's interventions are based on the theory of structural cognitive modifiability developed by Dr. Ruben Feuerstein, who was a Nobel Peace Prize nominee back in 2010. The, it's in a thousand programs nationwide and as well as in multiple countries worldwide, including NILD Canada, NILD Mexico. What I'm proposing ultimately is that, is that we would, we're gonna be trying to raise funds through foundations and see if we can get some large grants in order to partner with schools. I'm coming to Richland too first because, well, one, yes, I do live here, but also it is such an outstanding school district in the state that to start a partnership and to start a moving in this direction with a school's district that's already doing well would be a great model then for the rest of the state. One of the things that I've heard is that there has been a grant recently awarded specifically geared towards military children. And one of the questions I have is how would we, as a nonprofit organization, be able to partner with any of those schools? And to start, we can start with one school, two schools. I've heard that there are 10 schools that are awarded funds for that. And so that's one of the questions that I have for you all is to see, can we start this, start a partnership sooner than later?
We really don't reply, but I wish you'd give that information to Ms. Council here and she'll make sure all the board members get that. Thank you, Donna, appreciate it. Any others at this time? I'd like to address the board. I don't see any hands, so we'll just move right along to voting on our executive session items. Student appeals, is there a motion on that item?
Mr. Chairman, student number one, I'd like to make a motion to allow, to send the Blithwood Academy in lieu of expulsion and also attend Luride Act. Student number two, uphold the appeal and recommend to Blithwood Academy. Student number three, uphold the appeal and recommend to Blithwood Academy. Student four, uphold the appeal and recommend to Blithwood Academy and Luride Act. Student number five, uphold the appeal and recommend to Blithwood Academy.
Second that motion.
There were five students in this category. The motion's been made as seconded. Is there any discussion at this time? Here, no discussion, I move the vote on that item. Okay, that agenda item passes 7-0. I believe that's all we have to vote. That was on the consent agenda. That was the matter of information, I know exactly what you're talking about. Okay, next is old business. Okay, next is old business. Action requested. These were, these were brought up at our last meeting. These three policies, 10-1. The policy is to approve revisions to policy J.I., use of electronic communication devices in school.
Mister Chair.
Yes, ma'am.
I move that we table that until further additional study can be done on that.
Is there a second?
A second.
Okay, no discussion on the table motion. No, I hadn't voted yet, but I am now. Okay, the motion passes, but I will allow some discussion of the motion, but not of the table. Okay, okay.
That was a mine delay, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, Mrs. Jackson, would you like?
Yes, thank you very much. I certainly don't disagree with it being tabled. I would like to say that I think we should ask the committee who worked hard to present this to come back to us very specifically with a plan that will mediate the concerns that they were raising with regards to safety. And we received, we received some information as, as a board on a possible mediatory effort that would include or would allow students to bring their cell phones, but leave them in their locker and not have them on their possession. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, other items, ideas?
And Mister Chair, I was thinking perhaps we could move forward with the high school use of cell phones and then maybe take a little bit more time and deliberate about the use of cell phones in middle schools.
We evaluate. I believe we're presently allowing that.
Already in place for high school.
For high schools it is. We were just adding the schools to that policy. But we should get some feedback this year. And I think along with Mrs. Jackson's and Ms. Anderson's concerns, I think that's good. Any other comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll move on to our next action requested item, which is 10.2, approval of revisions to policy JJ, JJ-R, JJ-E, which involves student activities.
Mister Chairman, I make a motion that we accept the revisions as provided by staff.
Second that.
Second. Who seconded that? Okay, thank you. Okay, any discussion?
Mister Chairman, the only concern I raised before and I raise again is just that we continue to look at student athletes with challenges, that we challenge them to perform at, at the highest level. I know Mr. Garrett explained the last time that it ultimately means that they would reach a 2.0 by their junior year in school. I certainly would like to just ask that we continue to look at that and challenge them to, to try to reach that 2.0 even, even before that time if they're going to participate in sports. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Jackson. Other comments?
Mister Jackson, is that a current revision you'd like to see or just something for us to look at in the future?
Just some, just something to think of, Ms. Manning. I've noticed you remember we had the, the ranges of where they start and where they would hopefully, hopefully end up by juniors. But I'd like this, just to consider having them maybe take a look at beginning with the 2.0 rather than having to end up there as a junior. But not, not to amend the motion, sir.
Okay, all right. I just remember, I remember you asking about that last time and mentioned this time and didn't know if we wanted to throw that in while we're working on it.
Mister Chair, can I just ask one question? With the way it's written, how does that affect the students that are moving into the district?
They move in and start their classes, then we look at the previous semester.
So they're gonna, what happens if it's time for them to try out? So they wouldn't be able to try out until after they've attended for a semester?
No, they come in based on their grades that they bring to us. But then we start looking at our policy based on their previous semester with us.
And that's no different than if we didn't even have a policy. We would, we would have to abide by the high school rules policy and we'd have to do the same thing. We just have a different standard.
Yes, as you stated last time, Dr. Fleming, the high school league is a 1.0. We started per deliberations through the board at that time at this standard.
Okay, other questions?
Mister Chair, one more question. Is this something that we like advertise now that we're doing this? That, that's allowed? Or are we just waiting for people to come to us and ask and then tell them it's okay? And what, I guess, how do we make sure all of our coaches and everybody's aware of what this means to them specifically? Because I'm sure it's gonna have, there's gonna be a lot of questions and that kind of thing.
Over the past six months, we've had multiple conversations with athletic directors, with coaches to ensure that they're up to speed on all the processes. Mister Cleveland Smith, Mister Roger Wiley, and Ms. Margaret Walden worked together to process the students in, in collaboration with ADs. So the ADs are, and the coaches at the high school and middle school are all in the loop and very well informed. We're not advertising per se recruiting students. There's a lot of press and publicity about the changes in the law over the past year. But word is out, I assure you. We're processing students this semester.
Great, and I want to make sure that our charter school in our district is personally notified that this is done. I'm sure they're aware.
They are, they've, they've been notified.
Thank you.
Mister Chairman, I certainly don't want it to be misconstrued, my, my comments. And I certainly appreciate Mr. Garrett referencing that the standards set by the high school league are so low. And, and because of that, we're doing better than that. But I would not want to consider their, their, their benchmark as, as the goal for our district. I think our district has been successful in years past and, and it's because academics have played such a major role and a major priority. And I simply want to make it real clear that though the, the standard that's being set for student athletes is higher than the athletic league's standard, I want it, our goal to be higher than, than even that. And that's my only point. So I'm willing to comply with it, but I'm not satisfied that we not consider pursuing a 2.0 for all students participating in, in sports. Thank you, Mister Chairman.
Thank you, Mister Jackson. All, all comments? Me and Ms. Anderson were there when this policy was put into effect. And it's a different day today than it was then, Mister Jackson. Okay, so revisiting this policy may or may not, you know, maybe okay. I think you're on firm ground, fair and proper there. Okay? Okay, now we have a motion. Has everybody voted? Thank you very much. The motion passes unanimously. The last policy for vote tonight is the approval of revisions to board policy, J.L.D.B.B., self-esteem, which is our promotion and self-esteem promotion and suicide prevention policy. Do I hear, do I hear a motion?
Mister Chair, I move that we table this one until the next board meeting due to the fact that it's concerning suicide and things that we are to look out for. And I really believe bullying. I know we have a policy, a separate policy on bullying, but bullying is one of those things that we need to also be aware of and watch out for because some children get bullied to the point that they do end up committing suicide. So I want to incorporate somehow bullying into that policy. I did not get my board brief until yesterday because we were at the convention. And I just feel that we have to do, take it a step further. And also, Ms. Specter had made some.
You made the motion to table. Do I hear a second?
Oh! I thought you was gonna ask me why. So I gave it to you.
I won't do Robert's rules tonight. I'm just gonna move on.
Thank you, that's fine.
Okay, here's a second. Okay, there is no discussion.
That's fine, thank you, sir. I thought you was gonna answer my explanation.
No, no, no. I'll move on. Okay, the motion and a second to table. Could you bring that up for the vote for us? Vote, please.
Mister Chair. On the motion that says until the next board meeting, do we want to necessarily bound ourselves to the next board meeting? Or is that what we were wanting?
Well, I can withdraw until a later date indefinitely if that's what you would prefer.
We'll, we'll imply that on our vote. Okay, we'll change in the minutes. Okay, the table passed unanimously. Now entertain discussion on the policy.
Mister Chair, I would like to add two things to be looked at at that policy before it's brought back to us. From my interpretation of that policy, the way it's written now, it looks like the district's taken the full responsibility. I need for us to look a little closer at that. And also, I don't have it in front of me, but I want to know who's gonna be responsible for the funding. Because I think it stated in there that the Department of Education, somewhere, if they're, if they're gonna fund it, I'm okay with that. But I want to know where the funding's coming from.
Okay, other, other comments? Okay, hearing none, we'll go on to our next item, which is old business. Another action requested, update on our district's security crisis response. Mister Carter?
Ladies and gentlemen, last week, the 19th of February, Chuck Earls, who is our manager of emergency preparedness, attended a seminar at the State Department of Education. The primary speaker or presenter was Kenneth Trump, who's a national expert on school safety. As Chuck told me when he got back, we were checking all the blocks. Basically, everything he was saying we should be doing, we are doing. One of the things that was very key that came out of it is, I'm gonna quote Mister Trump here, so, "Is the first and best line of defense is a well-trained, highly alert staff and student body." So when you go back to your plans that you have and that we have in place, exercising those plans, making sure everybody is up to speed is, is really key to, to preventing tragedy. Along those lines, he also recommended rather than doing large tabletop exercises, that you do small tabletop exercises at each school so you can customize it to the school. So Chuck has been out, he's done six. We hope to get to all the schools before the end of the school year. And we're gonna try to continue that so that we're continually going through and making sure new staff and, and the folks at the school are up to date. One of the other things that he recommended, I talked, I did talk to a principal of this yesterday, is we tend to do the drills at the times when all the kids are in class. He recommends that we do drills at off times, like at dismissal or at lunch or when the kids are on the playground so that we're exercising more than just locking them into the classroom. What do you do if you're on the playground? So we're, we're encouraging our principals to do that. And the other thing that, that we're, we're not gonna try to get it done this year, but for the beginning of next year, we have these things called grab and go kits at schools. It's rosters and that sort of thing. We want to push that down to the classroom so that when the teacher has their own personal grab and go kit, if they're on the playground, they've got a roster with them of their kids so we can start accounting for kids. And that's another one of their recommendations. So it's a very good report. It's, he's written three books and has written eighty articles. So he's been in the business for twenty-five years. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Good, and at the State School Board Convention this week, that was a big, big subject of discussion and the sled, had a sled actually, did a seminar.
I would tell you that one of the things he says and y'all have already addressed is safety and security at school board meetings, which is why we have two security officers and, and tonight I think Eric is here. So y'all had addressed that.
When are we gonna have a drill, Jack? I'm just kidding. I don't want Ms. Anderson to jump on the floor here. No, no, but I'm serious, because it's amazing.
Unfortunately, it takes tragedies to get people to pay attention to that thing. I mean, you go back, you go back to Columbine. For a year after Columbine, it was very, very important. And, you know, there have been other incidents that have been smaller, but, you know, Newtown's once again shined a light on, on safety and security.
And I, but I do, I'm not, I do think this board, I know Ms. Specter really, I mean, she's serious about this and I am too. But, you know, maybe we just, during executive session, just have a little, you know, Chuck and you guys.
I can break Chuck and Eric in to talk to y'all about what you need to do.
And we can talk about that. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Mister Chairman, I have one question.
Okay.
Mister Carter, you said you were doing a tracking of the students. What did you say on that?
Each, each school has a grab and go kit that's, has all their students' names in it so that we can, if there's, there's an emergency and there's a crisis response, it's really two different things. When you do the crisis response, that's when you need to be able to start accounting for students. I can tell you, at every school shooting, there's been, one of the hardest things for people to do is account for everybody. So we want to push that grab and go kit down to the teacher level. So, and it's a little more complicated at middle school and high school because the kids rotate. So a teacher at a middle school or high school may have five rosters. But it will be all the kids that are in their class at fifth period. And then in elementary, it's typically just, because they're in their classroom, then it would just be the, the pullouts, the music art that would have multiple rosters for that day or that time period. That way, if something does happen, we can quickly account for everybody.
We, how are we accounting for our little ones?
I'm sorry?
How are we accounting for the little ones when they just go outside?
They would be part of the roster.
Pardon me?
They would be part of the roster. The teacher would have a roster. They would know who's in their class.
Okay, but without it being an emergency, I'm just, when you said that, it caught my, my ear. When they go out for recess, don't they have a roster to make sure every child that went out for recess comes back in from recess?
I would have to ask a teacher that question. I, I don't know.
Can a principal here answer that question? That causes me some concern. Because any time a child exits the building, they should be accountable when they return back in.
The teachers do go out with them. I think they know their kids, but I.
Okay, so there is a head count when they come back in.
I've watched them.
It just kind of caught my, my ear and I just wanted to make sure that there's some accountability in place, whether it's by numbers or names or what. But the same amount go out, needs to make sure they come back in. Thank you. That's it. Thank you, Mister Carter.
Mister Chair.
Yes.
One of the things I've asked for in the past, I know we have that phone number, that bullying kind of anonymous phone number. And I think you guys said you were gonna try to work on posting that throughout the schools. I know it's on some of the printed material. Are we making some progress on that or?
I think they all have it. I'll have to go back and confirm that. I mean, I think they have it on, available in the schools. I'm not sure what.
I just want to make sure that it's, it's visible and regularly visible to the students so that, I think some of them may be more willing to call an anonymous number and report than they would be to tell somebody that they know, particularly if it's a friend or somebody like that. So that, I feel strongly that number needs to be posted throughout our schools at, at all levels for those students to see and be very visible.
Our best source of information on students is students.
If we can just make sure that's being done.
Yes, sir.
Good, any other questions? Good comments? Thank you, Mister Carter.
Thank you.
Our next, uh, item, uh, for no, no action tonight, is, um, an update from, um, from human resources on our effectiveness, Mr. Garrett.
Yes, sir, we sent in your board packets, uh, items that we would like to move forward with, uh, from the effectiveness and efficiency study for the area of human resources, those being five dash thirteen and five dash twenty-one. Uh, we'd be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
The same, Mr. Chairman, the same, um, discussion, I just wanna make sure that prior to the board's, uh, the booklets being printed, uh, Dr. Burchew, if you will get with the principals, and make sure that all schools are in sync with the same information, and not, um, one school giving out six hours for five-minute tardies, and the other school giving out three hours or two hours, I want every school to be doing the same thing with the students.
Ms. Anderson, these are the staff handbooks.
Oh, that's right, that's the staff.
This is just staff, uh, human resources.
That's human resources, I'm thinking it was-
But that's what we're trying to do with the staff, to make sure everything-
Everything, so when were you guys, Cheryl, you do the, um, the who's, who's in charge of the student handbooks?
Right now, we are, um, discussing having consistency at a student handbook at some point, where we have the same thing that goes to every single student.
Okay, so that's what I had brought up earlier, that I wanna make sure that the four, was it four or five high schools, how many have we got now? Five high schools, that all principals, we're on the same accord, so a child from this school gets the same thing from the next school, so I want that in the new handbooks before they go out in August of two thousand thirteen.
Well, that's another-
I know, I just brought it up, because I, I was thinking I read it in here too, but, anyway, just give you a head jump on it for the August school year.
Mr. Chairman.
Any, any questions for, on this item, for Mr., uh, Mr. Garrett?
Mr. Chairman, do our, um, classified employees have, um, or the employees that we're talking about here, do they have grievance rights in the same way that our-
Yes, sir.
Teachers and others do?
Yes, we have, uh, the grievance policy applies to classified employees as well.
Across the board.
Ms. Batshelder, uh, heads our classified, is our director of classified employees, so she's at the roster to answer any questions along with myself, any other questions you might have?
I would open to the board, any other questions? Okay, thank you, Mr. Garrett, I mean, this is some things, um, again, we'll, a- as you go through and, uh, have policy, uh, updates, um-
Would you like for us to bring this back for action, or can we proceed at this point?
You know, again, this is one of those, I mean, this is, this is not a development of, uh, is this a funding thing, or anything we, uh, is changing policy, I don't, this is not a policy, this is more or less what, how we operate.
Right.
Any, uh, any, any questions as far as, uh-
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, a- as we've gone through this process, one, one thing that strikes me is we've kinda, we said this is our efficiency study, and then we said that we're kinda moving into this is now Richland Two owns this, and this is what we're doing, and, I mean, wh- where are we at? This is something I keep bringing up over and over again, that I feel like th- this process has morphed, and, and maybe, I, I feel like I'm the only board member, maybe, that's on the outside of understanding how this morph occurred, and exactly what, uh, is this efficiency study now? Or is this the Richland Two, um, study that, I mean, wh- where are we, 'cause I've heard a couple different things, and I'm very unclear as to-
These are things that we have looked at, uh, as an HR area, and these are things that we need to do, we believe, to make sure all our employees are on the same page.
I, I'm, I'm not, this has nothing to do with this specific piece, it has to do with, we've called it the efficiency study here, and I think the last time I had this discussion, it was, it's not the efficiency study, it's now the Richland Two. We've taken ownership over some of these things that we're doing, and it's not, so I, I'm just unclear as to what we are actually calling this thing, and where that's going, so it doesn't have anything to do specifically with that.
Okay.
Mr. Manning, it is, um, as we've discussed, that we look at a number of, uh, different reports and studies and information, as we are building, uh, toward greater efficiency and greater effectiveness. And we are taking each and every one of those, uh, whether they're a report, or a study, or an audit, if you will, we're taking all that information, and utilizing that to make the best decisions moving forward for Richland Two. And so that's why we, we're right now taking a variety of things, and, uh, bringing them to you, to understand as we are updating, whether it's department, or, uh, work that's happening in schools and so forth. And so we're looking at all of those things, and that's why it really all comes under Richland Two.
So, so this is now the Richland Two program that we're instituting, not so much the efficiency study?
No, that, that's exactly right, as we said, we are using some of those things that were perhaps identified in an efficiency study, or in best practices for technology, for example, or best practices in, and studies and reports that we are, um, gleaning from, let's say, in our special needs department. We're taking all of those things, and they're all wrapped around, they all belong to Richland Two, to take in for consideration.
So, we, we have effectively concluded the efficiency study, and now moved into the Richland Two, implementation of which some of what was in the efficiency study is moved over to this new process?
I don't think that you ever conclude something, I think you continue to look at all the resources that you have regarding your district, and, and, um, in whether it's an efficiency study again, or whether it's our one-to-one computing, when we had that report. Uh, there may be some things we implement now, or there may be some things that make more sense a year from now, and, uh, as we look at all of the, the, um, the moving parts, if you will, of the district, and moving forward, looking at what makes best sense in terms of efficiency and effectiveness.
But these checklist items that we're getting are things that are on the current, or what was the efficiency study, because it's still numbered based off the efficiency study.
I think, Mr. Chairman, can I try to address that, please, sir? Mr. Chairman, I'm gonna, can I address that, I think, Mr. Manning, what is happening here, this is, this is, this is part that was from the efficiency study. A lot of the things that was recommended in that study, we've already done, we had done prior to the study, and, um, this is just one of those things that we had not done prior to the study. So what you're asking, are we now going back to the efficiency study, and implementing some of those things, is that your question?
Well, I'm, I'm unclear, because I've heard us say that we are no longer on the efficiency study, that we've now kind of incorporated this into an ongoing next phase of a Richland Two plan, is what I understood, but then we reference back to the efficiency study for specific bullets, and so, e- either we've moved on beyond the efficiency study, or we're still using the efficiency study.
We're still using the efficiency study in cer- certain areas that we have not addressed, there are very, there are limited amount of things, I, as I, I recall correctly, that were in the efficiency study, that we have not addressed. This is one of those things that we had not addressed, so we're gonna go ahead and address it at this time, so that it would be ready by the August, uh, thirteen school year, am I correct on that?
This is what we would like to move forward with, and have in place, yes, for the next school.
But, but again, I, I'm going back to the point, I've not had an issue yet with a specific bullet, I've had an issue of, are we on the efficiency study, are we not on the efficiency study? That, have we moved beyond it, have we concluded that, and it, it's like this whole quasi, I don't know where we are, and where we're, if we're done with the efficiency study-
No, we're not done with the efficiency study, there's parts of the efficiency study that we have not completed, so, as, as Superintendent stated, we'll never get done and just put it behind us, it's an ongoing, uh, work of, piece of work, that we will continue to, to work on throughout our district. You know, even if we've completed everything that's recommended on there, we will still go back and look at that as a guide, until we have the next efficiency study done. Makes sense?
Okay.
I, I'm done, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, thank you, let's see here. Thank you, Ms. Garrett, I, you know, the, the, the direction for the, these are not, like I said, these are not policy decisions, these are just, these are, these are things you're going to do, there's lots of things, you know, rules and regs that you use every day, that we don't have a policy for, or directly vote on. Are there any objections with this, to what Mr. Garrett wants to do?
I know, no issues with the specific i- uh, items, no, sir.
Thank you, thank you, Ms. Garrett.
Thank you.
Okay, next, our next agendas for, uh, items for our next meeting, which will be March the twelfth at Polo, back at Polo Elementary School, Dr. Burchew.
Yes, sir, we have student learning report, uh, we will have a report on the dress code, and a report on budget design team information.
Did you get a committee for the dress code yet? Did you get a design team for the dress code?
Have we, uh, we have, we're gonna have our team meeting for that, or design team, or what do we, who's gonna present that, where, where's that info coming from?
Um, go ahead.
Okay.
Right now, what we're doing at the schools, and we, I don't know if we still have principals, yes, we do have a principal over here, they're collecting all the information, they're doing surveys, parents, teachers, and students, getting input back, they're compiling the information, giving it to the representatives, we have representatives for high school, elementary, and middle. We're meeting on Monday to compile all that information, put it together to present to you in your board packet, and then it'll be up for discussion on the twelfth.
Dr. Washington, who's doing the surveys, is that-
The schools, the schools, the principals of the schools. They're doing their own surveys, um, based on the needs of their schools.
Who are they surveying?
They're surveying teachers, parents, and students.
All of them, all the students?
I don't know if they're doing every single one of them, they're doing samples, um, Janine, Baron, SICs, PTOs.
Because I, I wasn't here at the last board meeting, and I wanna make sure it's not just from one size fits all, when we have whoever you're surveying.
I'm sorry, I, I don't, I don't quite-
In size, I don't want, if you've got stu-
You ta- you talk about a, a, a variety?
I want a variety of those students.
In sizes.
So, if, if you've got like a student body, president, or whatever, I might not get the information I'm looking for. If they're like a small, petite, instead of a medium or to a large, you see, I, I hate to really break it down that way, but that's what I'm looking for.
Baron?
Um, just to give you an example, I think that the dress is a bad concern, what we did at our school was, we selected, um, a group of students from different grade levels, from different types of dress, some kids dress, have some, some sort of alternate dress, or kids that dress athletically, or whatever, to, to develop some sense of what they thought were, was appropriate about the dress code, what they like, what they dislike. Um, once we do that, we're asking them to help us create the survey questions, they're really the ones that's driving what types of questions we ask, so that there's no bias from the administration, or bias from the teachers. We're also doing the same thing with the teacher group, and also do the same thing with the SIC, trying to get them to help us generate the questions first, and then administer those questions to teachers, to students, all students who willing to take the, the survey, and, uh, all faculty and staffers willing to take the survey, so that we can get a holistic view of what their concerns may be, what they like, what they dislike about the dress code.
And I'm hearing a variety of responses from some of the principals already, um, some of the students, um, think we need a more stringent je- dress code, some think that, uh, they need to be able to wear holes, as long as they're below the knee or thigh, um, all sorts of things are coming back, so I think it's gonna be a very interesting report that you get, and it's a, it's, it's, I understand what you're saying, but this is a variety of students, faculty, staff, parents, everyone.
This, this will not come back as an action next board meeting?
Oh, no, this is coming back strictly for discussion.
This is information, basically, it'll be as general information.
General information.
I think we had five, four or five meetings on this last time, I mean, before we even brought it, before we wrote the policy, uh, I mean, it was-
I remember.
Talking about inclusive, in fact, you can have so much information, Barbara, you can pull your hair out.
Well, I just want us to get back in a situation, and I talked to Cheryl about this, the flip-flop situation, I, I want us to really look at it, and, and go at it at a different perspective this time. I'm not making big changes, I just want it to be, kinda like what Mrs. Anderson said, I want it to be across the district, um, everybody's got their own thing they're doing out there.
And, and I think, from what I'm hearing, they're trying to do that, I'm gonna be honest with you, no matter how you do a survey, it's not gonna be inclusive, I mean, we pay people to do surveys, and we only get fifty percent of the-
But that's why I was asking.
I mean, you're not gonna, we're not paying anybody really to specifically do this, so-
I'm just curious.
But, but I, but you're right, you want to be sure that you got as wide a variety as possible, and that's, I think that's the best thing we can expect.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Wh- when we get done with this study, would, would it be helpful if we have either some of our art students, or if we have some kind of fashion design program, to do some renderings, uh, so that we have maybe more consistency as to what that dress code looks like, of what might be appropriate, just some, like, examples, that graphical representation of appropriate dress code?
Well, as we do po- project-based learning, I don't think that would be a problem at all, Mr. Manning.
'Cause I mean, I think that would really, it's hard to see, it's hard to see what's right in, you know, paper, but-
Uh, but, but, but we won't have that done this year.
No, that's okay.
We will not have that done before.
I was just tossing that out or something for maybe the future.
I don't mind doing that, listen, after being through, through this one time, I'm not really eager to start this project again, but, uh, but we do, we need to, but we need to, so. Uh, we'll talk about, we'll discuss, we'll go, let's go next week with the information we have, and let's see what more, you may want more information, Mr. Manning's idea is not a bad idea.
And we've also, um, Jill has, um, taken the liberty to go ahead and check with other school districts throughout the state, not just our, not just the middle of the area, but throughout the state, like Rory and Charleston, to see some of their dress codes, and so I have, uh, I have, uh, copies of those policies as well, and I'll present them.
And also, I would just like to suggest, and it's just a suggestion, you might wanna check with some of the buyers at the popular, uh, stores that the teenagers shop at, I'm not sure where girls shop, but, um, to see what, because, just to see what's in the stores, is about what they have to buy, so we can get some guidelines, sorta, from what they, the buyers are having, maybe they can come in and show you guys what the latest fashions are, because when I went, I was a little bit shocked, but I'm getting-
The only thing about that, with fashion, it changes, it, with, with young people, it just changes so fast, it, it changes so fast.
If they can kinda give you an idea, I guess, what the-
Well, they can tell you what's available.
What's available.
I mean, that's, I mean, you're right, it really will change, that's for sure, but, but I'm looking forward to the start of this, um, get it going, because, and we may, we may have it done before the, hopefully we will, but I'm not sure when we'll have it done, it may be summer before we-
Might be a little bit faster than the last time.
Well, it needs to be in the handbook, right?
Well-
Don't touch the handbooks.
Is that a yes or no?
Well, I, I don't think we wanna put our, our, the pressure for that type of-
Oh, I'm just asking.
I mean, I just don't think we wanna do that.
I just don't want the wrong thing going.
This may only last two meetings. And they can go into handbook, but maybe it won't.
Well, I would just-
Wishful thinking, bless your heart.
I mean, that was tongue in cheek, I know it's not, that's what I'm saying, I think we shouldn't put pressure on ourselves for next year's handbook.
No, we don't wanna do that, but we just wanna do it right.
Does it show up in the handbook?
Oh, yeah, the dress code, oh, absolutely.
That's why I was asking.
Every one of them. Oh, this is, this is gonna be interesting, and, uh, and, but, but we do need to do it, any other items from board members that you'd like to, to, uh, start looking into, or for future board meetings?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Uh, I'd like to ask the Superintendent if she would, uh, at a future board meeting, prepare a, a report on the Common Core, and give us an update on where we are as a district, as it relates to the district, I know that we've implemented, uh, some pieces of the professional development forward, and we actually implemented some courses, uh, this past fall, if I'm not mistaken, so, I'd like to, like to get a report, uh, before the end of this school term, on where exactly we are with the Common Core, as it relates to the professional development, I mentioned earlier tonight about the computer capability, uh, of our system to handle the new test that's gonna be rolling out next year, uh, and, uh, just some of the Common Core, uh, strategies that have been put in place, and how they're working, particularly focusing on- that have been put in place and how they're working, particularly focusing on, uh, teaching the new standards to our ELL students, uh, and what the, what the plan of attack is gonna be for that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. That was a big subject this weekend, last weekend too, with, with state, with Common Core. Not that y'all didn't do a good job teaching me, but evidently my brain sometimes doesn't work at eight o'clock at night. I really learned a lot about that, that was a good, those were good courses. Any other comments? Okay, thank you. Now's our ti- time for second participation, which we need to have a discussion about as a board, maybe for future agendas. Uh, anybody would like to speak to the board at this time? Come forward, state your name. Thank you very much. Board Superintendent comments, uh, Ms. Brill.
Okay, I wanted to thank Mr. Giuliano, Giuliano, for your hospitality tonight. The school looks wonderful and it's great to be back out here. I was here during the campaign. But it's great to come back out and, um, really impressed by your third, fourth and fifth grade students. They are articulate and do a nice job with the microphone, so I was very impressed. And congratulations to Alvera Butler and the students at Keels. Um, I think her multiplication mastery program is excellent and it seems that the kids are enjoying it and certainly engaged. So, I think that's a great way and it's a great tool. I got ready to tell them that you use it all your life, uh, whatever your career is, you just live, use it in ordinary living. So, uh, it's a great skill and they're doing a good job. And I wanted to say happy birthday to Susan Fleming.
I'll tell her.
Were you trying to get home tonight?
My children are taking care of that.
And, um, also interested in the dress code, uh, looking at that policy. I agree with Ms. Specter, uh, just to see what we can do, see what the kids are thinking, see what the principals can manage. Um, I think it's time, so very supportive of, of looking, taking a look at that and seeing what we can do. Thank you.
No comments.
Mr. Manning?
I think my only comment is, one, again, thank you everybody for the presentations tonight, they were great. Students are doing a wonderful job. Uh, as we move into the, the budget process, um, I will be looking closely again at, uh, our foreign languages and, and how we implement that within our district, um, and, uh, looking forward to seeing, uh, hopefully that on our budget committee's, um, comments and, and moving forward. Thank you.
Ms. Anderson?
Uh, kudos to my fellow board members. And, um, the little children were beautiful tonight. I just thought they did a wonderful job. And congratulations to all the people that, uh, won awards Northeast with the SIC, um, I think it was Condor or S- I can't recall all of them. But anyway, uh, congratulations to those people. Uh, it was Northeast and, um, what was the elementary school? Keels, yes, thank you. But anyway, um, and I appreciate the work that the administration, you know, continues to do for us and hate we have to send you back to the drawing table, but sometimes it's kind of necessary that we do these things so that we get it right the first time and we don't have to go back and redo policies later on. So, if it takes a little bit more time to do it right the first time, I prefer us doing that than run through it and then have to go back and redo it. So, uh, I thank you for your understanding and patience with the board, but I'm just one that wants it to be done right the first time. Thank you all for continuing to come out and, um, join us in our board meetings.
Ms. Specter?
Just would like to say thank you for having us here at Killian tonight. I just want to tell. I meant Bo- Bookman, geez, been a long day, okay? Sorry. I was excited about the little snapshots that were in the multipurpose room. Um, so I would like to tell this particular student ambassador to thank you for my card and I think everybody else feels the same as well. Um, it's great to see the work going on in the school. And those students that stood here tonight, I cannot wait to see them when they get in middle school. You would have thought some of them were middle school students. I was really so shocked when they were saying third grade, um, just watching their composure, how they stood there and didn't move, but it was their natural self. It wasn't they were scared by any means. Just want to say congratulations to everyone that, um, received an award. And Cheryl, you, I look forward to working with you on that dress code. And I'm not gonna give you a plaque with flip flops on it. Um, anyway, thanks.
Ms. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I won't repeat things that have been said, simply echo what's been said, I think it's been a great night. I want to thank, um, the Superintendent for creating this focus of our board meeting that has now increased the attention, uh, on student learning and, and less on some of the mundane, uh, routine things that can distract us from why we are doing the job we're doing and that is to educate, uh, all of our students. So thank you very much, Dr. Boshu, for incorporating a real sense of student focus in our, in our school board meetings and having dialogue and discussion. The students tonight exemplified, in my opinion, uh, what we really are doing as a district and doing very well. Many of you, probably everyone in this room, is aware of the challenges that Keels Elementary School has faced in the past based upon its performance on the state report card and, uh, I'm convinced, after hearing those young people speak tonight, that they are well on their way to improving their overall rating and we're gonna see great things, I believe, coming, um, from that school and continuing to see great things from all of the other schools. Thank you, Mr. Giuliano, for hosting us tonight. Also want to thank all the schools in Richland Two who celebrated Black History Month this month. As it's winding down, I had the privilege of being over at Lannabe Nelson and speaking and I want to thank those teachers for inviting me and giving me an opportunity to be there. Fifty years ago this year, a speech was given in our nation's capital that changed race relations in this country, uh, for, forever. And we celebrate the birthdays of two individuals who were trailblazers this month for equality in America. That's President Abraham Lincoln and abolitionist Frederick Douglass. So, I am honoring them, uh, for being individuals who set the stage for the emancipation of, of men and women of color and certainly honor them, uh, during this month of Black History celebration. I, I was very, very pleased, uh, with, uh, the, the reports tonight. We didn't talk a lot about the budget, we didn't talk at all about the sequestration and what it might mean to Richland School District Two if in fact it happens on Friday. So, Mr. Davis will be here, very interested in, in hearing from you, uh, at our next board meeting as a result of sequestration, which is probably gonna happen, what financial impact that federal, um, cut is going to mean for us as a school district and offering services going forward. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Dr. Boshu?
I first would like to, uh, recognize our, uh, board member that was on a panel just this last week at the School Boards Association meeting. It was great to see, uh, Mr. Jackson along with, uh, two other board members and they really did a fabulous job talking about the, the challenges that we have in school districts across South Carolina and yet the great work that continues to happen. I was very pleased to, uh, have a chance to see, um, Mr. Davis's session as well at the School Boards Association meeting. He did an outstanding job, matter of fact, he had back-to-back sessions and I think that they were pretty well standing room only, both. And, um, and I also had an opportunity to be with Fred McDaniel and Ken Blackstone as we talked about our parent partnership summit in a session. And, uh, I will say that all of the presentations were very well received and, uh, I thought it was great that so many people asked us for further information and contact information. I believe that we are leading the way in many ways across the state and I think it was just outstanding that we were, we had so much representation at that meeting. I will also say, I recently had an opportunity to visit the REACH program at Killian Elementary School and I encourage all of, uh, of our entire community to take time and visit Killian Elementary. We have volunteers almost every single day that come and offer reading enrichment to our students there. Uh, it's a wonderful example of community outreach and how volunteers are really making a difference in the lives of students. Matter of fact, we have parents, business leaders, Richland Two employees and retirees that are, are there each and every day. And I wanted to congratulate, uh, the School Improvement Council at Richland Northeast High School. It is one of five finalists for the Dick and Tonki Riley Award for School Improvement Council Excellence. Uh, Richland Northeast was the first recipient of the award some ten years ago. Uh, the SIC is another great example of how parents and community working alongside teachers, students and administrators are making our schools great. And looking to, ahead, this week, later this week, we have, um, a number of people that are visiting our school district, uh, leaders from all over our state and country are coming here to see our one-to-one computing initiative. And we are very excited about that and I know Dr. Hamm has worked hard with her team to prepare for this visit and, um, certainly, I think it's always great to share best practices and again, leading the way, I think, is, is very important. And I also wanted to just say, um, I thought the presentations by our students, our teachers, our administrators and parents tonight were excellent and I think that it really shows, uh, the direction and the directional focus, the common language, the common understanding that we are striving for in Richland School District Two. Thank you.
Any cabinet members here, care to share any? Thank you. Ms. Anderson, you're right about, I think, tabling that, uh, suicide prevention policy. It was a pretty major re- revision. Most of the revisions we have, we struck out three words and, you know what I'm saying? We, we changed a few things, this was a major one, um, and we'll see how that goes. I think we need to take a little closer look at that. And I, these students tonight, they were in front of us, um, it's, it was, it was so good to see them be successful because that's what it takes. Once they're successful in math, they'll be successful in reading or science, or whatever, whatever they're studying, it's just, but the success breeds further success and it's, um, it's been true for, since the beginning of time and that's never gonna change. I really were, were impressed with their, um, what they did tonight at this board meeting. That's all I have, is there, um, is there a motion to adjourn?
Um, move that we adjourn?
Ms. Anderson, Ms. Specter seconds?